Okay, my clock just turned four and I see that we have a quorum of the council in the room. So I will call the meeting, the city council, city of Hillsborough to order. First item tonight on our agenda is the approval of our consent agenda. We have five items under our consent agenda. And uh, I'm gonna ask Mr. Styles if, I don't see Crystal here yet. Do we need to wait on her? Should we, should we skip ahead?
You can go ahead and approve that through the consent agenda and then just work her in when she shows up.
All right, it sounds good. Okay, first item on the consent agenda is vouchers totaling nine hundred fourteen thousand two dollars and thirteen cents. And everyone receive copies of the vouchers. Any questions regarding the vouchers? Next, we're minutes from our August five, twenty twenty-five regular council meeting. Everyone receive copies of the minutes. Any corrections or questions regarding the minutes? Next, we have three CDBG items. The first is three CDBG dash CR one twenty-six North Main pay application number one. Did everyone receive that? And next is CDBG dash CR one twenty-six North Main change order number one. Did everyone receive a copy of the change order? And finally, CDBG dash CR one twenty-six North Main change order number two. Everyone received copies of that. And I see Ms. Hinnon has joined us. Is there anything about these items that you would like to comment on? Or would you just like to comment in general at, at, at a later time?
Um, I can give you a couple of updates too, if you'd like.
Well, sure.
Okay, great. Do you have any go up there?
Yeah, please, you would please.
Sorry for my delay, my bid opening an hour and a half away, we're a little sideways, so it took a long to get here. Um, so today we have our very first pay application for our commercial rehab for one twenty-six North Main. Um, progress is going very well. And uh, we just have a couple of change orders, because you know, once you get into an old building and start messing with things, then you find things that you did not expect. So that's why we have a couple of change orders today. Uh, I will also give you a, a quick update about our childcare center before we make those motions. Um, the state came in and did their monitoring, which basically means they tour the facility. They come in, they look at all the paperwork, um, and then they're, they, they're gonna write us a clearance letter. Um, we have a couple of things that we're taking care of, like there was some paperwork at childcare. We also need a copy of it in, in the box here that Matt took care of. So there's just a couple of things that, that we still need to take care of. As soon as they give us that clearance letter, then we'll have a public hearing to close that grant out and we'll be all done with that one.
That's exciting.
Yeah.
Very good.
Um, so tonight, we're just um, looking for a couple of motions, one for your uh, pay application number one, and then one for both of those change orders. I did bring copies with me, but you have copies.
But yeah, and that's gonna be actually included in our consent agenda, so it'll be just one motion and, and uh, one vote, which we'll take here in just a minute. Are there any questions regarding either the uh, the uh, childcare center or the one twenty-six North Main project from the council? Does anybody have any questions regarding either of those projects while Crystal is here?
I do. Um, for the North Main project, are these change orders gonna add any type of significant? I don't know, I guess I see the council number increased. I mean, is, I guess, is this um, what we can account for? I mean, there's no more, as of this time, anything coming up.
So we got into, like a little bit past the kitchen on the north wall. We thought was a small window. They took the wall around it out and it's a four foot by four foot window that, the glass was broken. There was a tree growing between the two malls. So we have a, we have a little bit of repair to do. We need to figure out, are we putting in a smaller window? How are we gonna do that? Um, so there will be more, there will be more. Um, but for today, we only have two.
But again, just, you know, making sure that we're all clear. This is just strictly pass through for the city. This is not, you know, if the project goes beyond what uh, what it's budgeted at right now, that's not something that's coming out of the city.
It's on the owner's.
Yeah, we will not come back and ask you for money.
Okay, thank you.
So, I don't know if you recall when we were up there and picked up the big check up in Topeka. You recall what the lieutenant governor told us?
He said, spend this money quickly.
He said, go fast.
Go fast, that's right.
And uh, as you can see, Crystal's the right person for the job. She's going fast.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Crystal.
Thank you.
I appreciate you being here.
Thanks so.
All right.
All right.
If you do get a hold of City Staff, they know how to get ahold of me. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions regarding the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the consent agenda submitted. Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second?
Okay.
Councilman Jorgensen seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we come to our first opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here in the room or online that would like to address the council at this time? Anybody in? Okay. Hearing none, we'll close the first public comment opportunity. And now we will turn it over to our guests from the Marion County Emergency Management Director, Marcy Hostetler.
And you want me to?
Please.
Okay.
That way we can get you on camera.
Oh, goodie.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for the opportu- opportunity to talk in front of you. Um, with me is my deputy director, Dan Schaefer. He is also here today. I did have some handouts for you. The, one of the things that we wanted to do is kind of clear up some misconceptions about emergency management, what it is and what it does. So that's a lot of what these handouts are. The first thing, we wanted to let everybody know, we use the abbreviation EM for emergency management. It gets confused with EMS, which is emergency medical services. So EMS is the ambulance. That is who is in charge of that. EM, a lot of times that gets confusing because we're the behind the scenes folks. We are the puzzle piece between what we have in the county and what we need in the county. So this talks a little bit about kind of some of the things that we do. Um, the first thing that we do, emergency managers have to be certified. Um, that is a Kansas administrative regulation. Each county has to have an emergency manager. Um, that is also a Kansas administrative regulation. So there are some state requirements on that side of it. Um, what do we do? Well, the biggest thing that you probably all get my severe weather emails. Um, probably annoyingly sometimes. But uh, the biggest thing we do is Dan and I track weather. All day we had our radar up, we're tracking the storm, we're putting updates on Facebook, we're sending out messages. We sent out, I sent out a message to the schools, warning them that they may have rain coming in when they were letting the schools out and the school buses were running. So they may want to watch some of the roads that they're on. So we do things like that. Um, we also have emergency alerts we send out, which I'll talk a little bit more about that. One of the big things that we do, if you look at D on that paper, we're the ones who work with all the damage reports in the county. And that includes the cities that are located in Marion County as well. So if you have anybody that has a damage report from a storm, I put both contact information on there. They're more than welcome to call dispatch, uh, non-emergency number. But if they, if you wouldn't mind, just let your um, citizens know, give me a call too. Because in order for us to turn in a disaster declaration or reimbursement from the state, we have to make a certain number or a threshold that we have to have of money spent, so. Um, the other thing that we do and probably one, another huge thing that we do is when we track weather, we are not the only ones that work with that. In everything in emergency management, it is always a team. It's just Dan and I and EM, but when we're tracking weather, it's all fire departments. It's all law enforcement agencies. It is EMS, it is dispatch, and it is EM. All of us work together for that. If they are bigger disasters like flood events, snow events, um, if we have wildland fires, we also bring in road and bridge and planning and zoning. So this is not a one man office type of thing. We all work together for all of those things. And you'll see that goes right into number two, which is we assist emergency services. So if they find they need additional resources on a call. Um, a big one that a lot of people have seen me or the white truck around town is when you have a structure fire in the town of Hillsborough, you'll see EM there. Because our part is to contact Red Cross on behalf of the homeowner. Um, unfortunately, in this day and age, we have to contact Red Cross because they kept getting phoning calls, people wanting money for a structure fires. So now Red Cross requires an emergency services person to call them and say, hey, there was a structure fire at this address. Here's my radio number, here's the CAD number, and here's a phone number you can contact me. So they know it's legitimate, so then our citizens can get it. So, so that's one of the things that we do. Um, we also help them out with training and classes. Um, just today, we're gonna bring in a uh, KDOT's gonna come in and we're gonna, in October, we're gonna do a class on roadway incidences on highways, and it's for law, fire, and EMS. So we're bringing that course in. Um, later on this week, we have a landing zone class that um, we brought in that works with St. Luke's Hospital. So what do you have to know when you're landing a chopper someplace for medical purposes? So, um, I'm not gonna go over every single one of those. And number three, those are all the different committees. You guys know because you have tons of committees too. Um, I did make sure that I put what they need, not just their acronyms. I've been, um, sometimes I'm warned that I use too many acronyms. So I apologize. So they are listed out. Um, that we do, we're on different groups and boards and things like that. And then on the backside, one of the biggest things that we have helped cities with, for example, is we help people with plans. When you're writing an emergency response plan or an emergency operations plan, I will not tell you what to do in your plans. I do not do that. The county does not tell the cities what to do. But we will be happy to look them over, make recommendations, suggestions, things like that. If you're wondering what a plan that I write looks like, if you go out to the county website and look up the emergency operations plan, Dan and I had to write that. So that five hundred page document and then all those individual um, annexes, that was Dan and I. So it kind of shows you what type of plans we write. Uh, we also help the schools, we help businesses and nonprofits write plans. We do safety plans for in-county events. We will be doing a safety plan for Hillsborough Arts and Crafts. Um, your uh, police department is very kind to EM, and they allow us to do a mock EOC that day, which means it's an emergency operations center. So we pretend um, that we are running a full emergency operations center the days of, the day of arts and crafts. And that's what law lets us do. They let us run all dispatch right through the command trailer or through the police department. Because Hillsborough Police Department is my backup emergency operations center if something happens in Marion. So, so yes, he lets us exercise, we call it an exercise or just a training that day that we can run uh, emergency operations centers. So that's kind of cool. We do all kinds of presentations. You'll see the list there. And we also do all kinds of different events, which I mentioned Arts and Crafts is a big one. On the bottom of that page, I have both Dan and I's business cards in case anybody needs them. Now, the cool stuff and the geekiest stuff that I like is the papers that are attached. The big one is Everbridge. This is what sends out emergency alerts for the county. If you or your citizens are not, not signed up for this yet, that QR code allows them to sign up. The cool part about this system, you don't just have to sign up for Marion County. If you have family or relatives living in Butler, living in Harvey, living in Sedgwick or another county, you can sign up for alerts from other counties and it'll give you some of those different options on there. Then the next page, this app is just really, really cool. Um, there is an app that you can get downloaded on your phones for free. It's called What Three Words. What three words this company has gone through and mapped out the entire earth in ten by ten squares. So you don't have to know the address of where you're at. And for all of you who are from Marion County, you know that there is nine hundred and forty-three square miles in this county and lots of rules. So sometimes you have no idea where you're at if you're in the middle of a field. Or the example we like to use is if you're in the middle of the reservoir. If you're boating in the middle of the reservoir, there's no address you can give dispatch when you're calling and saying, I, I need help. So in order to get Hillsborough Fire out there in their boats, you can pull up this app, give those three words to dispatch. They will send that out to all the responders, because we all have what, three words on our phone? And we can do directions right to where you're at on the reservoir. You don't have to have an address. You look like you want to ask a question.
Me? No, I'm just fascinated by it.
All right, so this is a really cool app. There also is a QR code. I'm a fan of it, so there's that one there. And then the last page, um, in order to make it easier for all the citizens in Marion County, Dan and I made up a page on the website that this QR code will take you directly to, and it's all things for preparedness. How to do an emergency kit? What types of things do you need to prepare for, for floods? What is financial preparedness? Any preparedness item, we worked in coordination with the health department, and we came up with preparedness items for citizens. So that's what this last page is, so. And I promised Mr. Styles that I would keep it to ten minutes, so anybody have any questions? The very long agenda, so I wanted to make sure.
In, in what ways do you connect with the police department? Um, I, I think you had mentioned one there with, around the, the craft fair. Um, but is there any, ever any uh, contact or working with the police department? How does that, how does that work?
Daily, um, police, fire, EMS, and myself, um, we work together every day. All, um, you know, every other day, all week. If there is any incidents that we respond to, we assist with, with those when they ask us for assistance. Probably the biggest thing is we have a group here in Marion County that is called the Emergency Response Leadership Board. So even if I don't see these guys every day, we meet every other month and we talk about some of the different calls. Um, in our line of work, there are some calls that can be a little bit more traumatic. Um, or that involved very type of, different types of situations that can cause some PTSD and things like that in responders. So we have a group that we all come together and you can freely talk in that group. It's not a public meeting, you have to be a responder to be in there. And we can freely talk about that call. And it's for us, it's like stress debriefing. So that bad accident with the motorcycleist down in Peabody, that's definitely one that was discussed at a meeting like that. Um, anytime like your chief of police has something that he needs. He calls me, texts me, no matter what time of day, and he can ask a question and I can get him some resources that he needs. One of the things that I did is when the FBI came down with that big mandate on all law enforcement now has to go encrypted because they traced identity theft back to um, radio traffic. I went out and researched a grant and got a grant to get all law enforcement Marion County radios. So those are types of things that we assist and help with on a daily basis. One that another of you or chief of police recommended, he, um, I don't go on large accident calls. Um, we tend to pre-position. In other words, like if there's an accident at, let's say, K fifteen and, and highway fifty-six, you might see Dan and I's vehicle sitting up at the fair. So in case those guys need us, we go out to scene. Um.
You kind of let them do their thing, and you're many times in a support role, right?
Always. We are always a support role. I am never in charge of a seat, ever.
I see.
I am just, um, well, one of the things that the guys refer to us as, uh, when you don't know where to go or what to do, just call Marcy. So that's kind of what we do. When you don't know where to go or who to ask or what to do for an emergency services, you call me. Law enforcement calls me when they need search and rescue. Um, to bring up if we're looking for somebody in the community. I'm the one you call if you need a plane to drop water on a wildland fire. Um, if you need to call for other resources for other counties, we need more light towers. We need more command trailers. We need more things at an incident. They call emergency management and we get it for them.
All right, thank you for explaining that.
No problem.
So Marcy, how long have you been doing this?
Um, I started two weeks before COVID started.
What you do.
Yeah, I uh, I got the emergen- I was a, a fireman for twenty, little over twenty years um, up in Nebraska before I, we moved here to Kansas. And so my background is in fire. Um, I was also an EMT, but uh, got to Kansas. I was working in the clerk's office for a little while. And then I got the job in emergency management and hadn't even been to any classes. And they go, here's a pandemic. Take care of this. We took care of it. Um, yes, we did. We were setting up points of dispensing and we did all that stuff um, during COVID. And then I did get um, certified in emergency management and I took over as director, when was that, twenty twenty-four? No, twenty twenty-three, October twenty-three, I took over as director. So yeah, I, I've been doing it for about five years now.
Hmm, right. Any other questions for Marcy? I would like to say that uh, you have made a huge difference since you've taken over on your role. And I just want to thank you from the community of Hillsborough for all of the tireless work that you put in, again, very much behind the scenes. You're not that person that's out there out front, you know?
No.
Uh, driving ninety mile an hour down the road with their bikes and sirens going, so. That, I know that's not true. And, and so we very, very much appreciate all you do for Marion County, but especially for Hillsborough.
No problem, anytime. That's what I do. But, and yes, I have gotten in trouble because I went and hid in a fire chief's truck, so I didn't have to talk to the media. Yes, I am the behind the scenes person, not out in front. I do not like that part, so.
But we appreciate you and, and you're very communicative. As, as you mentioned, your emails are never bother, they're, they're always informative and, and we appreciate the communication, so thank you.
Well, and thank you for everything that you do, because you guys helped me out a lot, so I appreciate it.
Well, that's the way it works.
Yes.
Cooperation and collaboration, right?
It's always a team effort.
It is. Thank you both, Dan.
Thank you, and thank you for letting us interrupt your very long email. I appreciate you guys.
Okay. Well, that's gonna take us into our business section of our meeting and we've got the length, the uh, section there. I will point out that item number eight will not be addressed this evening. Uh, we are not quite there with that lease agreement with the uh, with the Yamaha golf cart, so we will pick that up at a later time. Uh, but first up, Mr. Styles, we have an engagement letter with some group called Spencer Fane.
Yeah.
For legal services and bond counsel services.
Sir, thank you. Yeah, so this, as JT mentioned at our last meeting, um, our, our city attorney team has moved over from uh, TWG to Spencer Fane. Uh, and to facilitate that transition, we need to adopt a new engagement letter with them um, to, to serve as our city attorney and our bond counsel services. Uh, so Andrew will continue working for us as the city attorney, uh, supported by a, a, the best team around, uh, as far as I'm concerned.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, so you've got the engagement letter there. It's basically the exact same letter we had with uh, TWG. Everything, all the terms are, are the same as far as I can tell. Um, I don't know if you have anything to add to that, Andrew?
I don't, except, I mean, everything that Matt said, um, we're excited about it. We think it's, it's gonna be really good. The Spencer Fanes uh, headquartered out of Kansas City, but they've got six hundred plus lawyers and the, the experience and access that, that we'll have now will, it'd really be helpful to our clients. Um, as Matt mentioned, JT and I, Kendra, who you know, and it comes every once in a while, and our partner, Mary Carson, uh, have all made the, the transition, so, and Paula.
And Paula, don't forget Paula.
And Brayden are, are paralegal, and so everybody that you work with on a, a regular basis is, is all still together. Uh, yeah, the, the engagement letter terms are the same as they were at TWG. We're not changing any of that, and so we hope it'll be really smooth transition. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Andrew?
Y'all working from home now, or?
No, we, we are temporarily working out of the KBP office, um, while, while uh, the larger firm finds us a, a temporary or more permanent office.
Yeah.
Hope so.
For those of you that have been, I know Ronald has been to KPP, there's just a little bit of room there. And I'm glad that you're able to utilize that. I mean, that seems like a pretty, a pretty uh, natural thing to happen, so we're glad that's worked out. Any other questions? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to uh, approve the engagement letter for Spencer Fane for legal services and bond counsel services and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Councilman Wilkins moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman, by seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Andrew, we're just super excited for you guys. We know this is, this is a big deal. It isn't something that happens obviously every day. So uh, we're, uh, we're happy to make that move with you and uh, excited to continue our association.
Thank you, and we really appreciate our relationship with Hillsborough. Glad I can continue, so thanks.
You bet. Next up, I, ordinance fourteen eleven authorizing the sale of Salem Home. Oh, IRB.
IRB. I don't think we're authorized.
Everybody was awake. Ordinance fourteen eleven authorizing the sale of Salem Home, IRB, Mr. Styles.
Uh, yeah, so this is the uh, authorizing ordinance for issuance of the industrial revenue bonds, their healthcare facility, uh, non, uh, nonprofit bonds, so very similar to the arrangements that we have with our Parkview, uh, Parkview folks. So yeah, uh, uh, Parkside, excuse me, not Parkview, that's a church, I always get them to confuse. Um, so this would be, this would authorize the sale of these bonds. Um, we've been working through all the things necessarily, necessary for this. This is just the authorization uh, to do this. They've gonna, they've proposed to go up to three million. I don't think they're gonna get to that. I don't remember what the actual cost ended.
Two point six eight, two point million, six hundred and eighty thousand is the bond amount.
So, uh, yeah, so what you're doing here with adoption of this ordinance is allowing that to move forward. I don't know if you have anything to add to the?
Certainly, so Central State's Capital Markets is the underwriter on this deal, so i- it's part of authorize, passing this ordinance and authorizing the issuance of the bonds. And this is the final action uh, that you'll consider on this deal. Um, you will be authorizing the sale of these bonds to Central State who as underwriter then turns around and sells them on, on the public market to their, their customers. Um, they price those today and every maturity has a different uh, principal, excuse me, has a different interest rate, but the blended true interest cost was under six percent, which I think is a good result for uh, for Salem Home for their. To remind you, of course, um, Salem Home is completely responsible to make all the principal and interest and costs on these. This is, the city is a conduit issuer, and so it's, it's not, uh, it's not an obligation. The city certainly doesn't come out of any uh, tax revenues whatsoever. Um, other than that, we are scheduled to close on September second. Um, happy to answer any questions you might have about it.
Any questions? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to adopt ordinance fourteen eleven authorizing the sale of Salem Home IRB. Councilman McCarty moves. Councilman Jorgensen seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll poll the council. Councilman Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilman Wilkins?
Yes.
Councilman McCarty?
Yes.
Councilman by?
Yes.
The uh, ordinance is hereby adopted and the mayor will sign. We have another ordinance next, which is fourteen twelve, which is adopting the twenty twenty-five UPOC. There, did I get that acronym right? UPOC with additions, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So this is the Uniform Public Offense Code. Um, it's written every year while the league of municipalities puts together all the changes within the, the state, state stat that, that happen every year. Uh, we adopt it by reference, uh, because they, they do the publication, the collection, publication changes to that. And so uh, Andrew's drafted a memo that uh, Andrew's drafted a memo that kind of gives you an idea of what has changed within the UPOC and the STO, the Standard Traffic Coordinance. Uh, not a ton as far as what that goes, but with uh, the U, uh, the UPOC, we actually are gonna be adopting a couple of things that are uh, amendments to that, which you can do as a city. Um, so really, we have two, uh, in the criminal littering section. Uh, we are adding uh, some language there with the, the intention to, to address grass clippings, leaves, branches, and other vegetative material that get intentionally and recklessly thrown into the street. Um, there's not, and there's never been really a way to do this, so we have, we do have some homeowners or, or maybe renters, whatever, that as they mow, they shoot things into our streets, uh, can create an unsafe situation for motorists, particularly motorcycle riders. Um, and it's just kind of an unsightly mess and can clog up our storm gutters, actually, so uh, we wanted to put in something in that so that we would have a little bit of an opportunity to uh, to address that if that issue comes up. Uh, so there, you know, that falls under littering, uh, so that defined structure falls out from that, and then we also have public nudity in there, um, this is a situation that came out of, I think, Sumner County or one, a, a, a county south of ours where there's, there's really no way to address somebody who's walking around naked. Um, if they're not acting in a loot or lascivious manner. So this would give us the opportunity to address that if there was an issue with that. Uh, it's not a problem that I'm aware of uh, here, but as we're gonna take in a preemptive stance on that to avoid a situation. Better watch yourself, buddy. Uh, of course, with public nudity, it's, uh, it can be considered a protected speech, so you have to be a little bit careful with how you observe that and how you address that, but uh, I think that I've got confidence that this will, this will take that, this will take care of that for us. Again, not an issue right now, just a preemptive thing in order to, to prevent an issue, so with those two additions, uh, we would be uh, adopting the UPOC or the Uniform Public Offense Code uh, with the pra- passage of that ordinance.
And Matt, if you would like to, I guess, for the record, state where people can responsibly dump their grass clippings?
So we have, uh, for grass clippings, you have, the um, city has a compost area, which if you go up to where Midway Motors is on what is East Orchard Drive. Uh, you take a left or you head east. Uh, and there is a, a public place to dump that, which is our compost pile. Uh, you can also get compost from there if you're into that, if that's something that you wanna do. Uh, and then if you have branches, you can take that out to the burn pile, the city burn pile, which is about a mile, it's a mile north on Indigo. Uh, mile north of fifty-six and it's on the east side of the street there too, very clearly marked, hard to miss. Uh, you can't take lumber or anything like that there, just branches, um, and we burn that off when it gets full, but usually once or twice, you know, once or twice a season.
No, we do have a separate ordinance for grass clippings on the street that's in the big black book and all that, is this the same thing or is this?
Uh, this is different, uh, it adds it to the po- uh, public offense code, so it falls under our littering section.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know, so, but you could charge him on the other one too.
Theoretically, yeah, this makes it a lot easier.
Do we charge per grass that enters the street?
You have to count it.
I think the uh, as with, as with any uh, any, any of our laws, uh, there's a lot of discretion in how that gets enforced as far as, you know, uh, let, let's be reasonable and, and try not to be uh, too, too crazy with that as far as how we enforce those type of things.
Well, I know the motorcycle riders don't like grass in the street. I mean, they gripe about it all the time.
Bike runners too.
It does make the streets slick for them, so. You don't pay attention, it's probably his control.
Okay, any other questions regarding ordinance fourteen twelve adopting the twenty twenty five UPOC with additions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to adopt ordinance fourteen twelve, Councilman McCarty moves, Councilman By, seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll poll the council, Councilman By? Councilman McCarty? Councilman Wilkins? Councilman Jorgensen? Ordinance fourteen twelve is hereby adopted and the mayor will sign. We have a third ordinance tonight, which is fourteen thirteen, which is adopting the twenty twenty five STO, which is the standard traffic offense. Ordinance, okay.
Yeah, there, again, there's, if you refer back to the memo there, there's a few changes with regard to how, how things are defined, it's usually mostly defined things. There's occasionally things in there with DUIs or how that gets enforced at the state level. Uh, but there's just some definitional changes there and a couple of changes with regard to stationary vehicles, uh, displaying hazards. Operation of worksite utility vehicle, failure to comply with the traffic citation. Pretty minimal, honestly, so uh, we're recommending adoption of fourteen thirteen and adding the STO for this year. And I would note that we have the printed copies of these in-house already, so soon as it gets published, uh, it will be in effect.
Any questions? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to adopt ordinance fourteen thirteen, which adopts the twenty twenty five STO. Councilman Wilkins? Moves? Okay, Councilman Jorgensen, seconds, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll poll the council, Councilman Jorgensen? Councilman Wilkins? Councilman McCarty? Councilman By? Ordinance fourteen thirteen is hereby adopted. Next, we have uh, a few items that uh, we have uh, uh, Darren Newfeld from EBH here tonight to help us with. First up is consideration of an agreement with KDOT and EBH for the KDOT C-Clip Grant Program.
All right, well, kinda covered two of these right here, they're almost the same thing, just the two different projects. Basically, uh, on these two projects, since you guys, uh, there's federal grant money involved, the, uh, you guys, our contract is actually a three-way contract between you, the state, and us, because it's got federal money backing it, so the KDOT has to go through the process. And also then, our contract in this case is covered at the same percentage as the construction cost, so in this first C-Clip, uh, the city is responsible for five percent of this entire project, so five percent of our cost, ninety-five percent of our cost is being paid by the state. That's why we have to do a three-way contract. So, gone through the months and months of getting this contract approved by KDOT. Uh, and so, um, this first one is for the tr- turn lane, addition of the turn lane, uh, on fifty-six west of the Sonic or Orchard entrance. As well as replacing the, the pavement that's kind of on the city side of the highway up in that area. And so, uh, this first one, uh, our contract is for total, oh, I've got to find it real quick, fifty-two thousand five hundred fifteen dollars and forty-six cents. And this is for dis- uh, survey and design. It does not include construction inspection because that has to come later after the project is let's.
This is, the C-Clip, we have a five percent obligation, so it's two thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents, and then, then anything over that maximum compensation.
But there won't be anything maximum over the owner.
How well is that gonna affect the fifty-six project?
It won't, in fact, it's actually gonna help it because when we start, when we add lanes here, they'll look more serious at what needs to be done within the city limits of Hillsborough. So, I, and I made my recommendations when I, when I went to those meetings, um, that my recommendation, I don't know if it'll go very far. My long-term recommendation is that from city limits to city limit, we need either a center turn lane down the whole thing or bypass lane, basically a four lane. Down the entire thing. Uh, just because of all the turning movements that are happening in so many of the intersections.
And you say a center turning lane, that would be similar to what's going through Galloway, right?
Yeah, kind of, i- i-
Isn't that what they have?
Yeah, you gotta be careful with center turn lanes though, so they don't become conflicting with the other traffic movements, so turn lanes on one side with the bypass lane on the other side seem to work better.
But that's what, that's what, that's what that is, the river Galloway, right? Okay.
Yes.
Just from a definition.
Right, so this will not hurt that future thing, in fact, it'll help them all pretty pre-say, hey, you know, it was needed here, so it was already added.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious.
Any other questions on, on the uh, first item? Okay, hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve the agreement with KDOT and EBH for the KDOT C-Clip Grant Program. Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second? Councilman Wilkins, seconds, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries, and now we come to the agreement with KDOT and EBH for the KDOT TA Grant Program, Darren.
Uh, this is the for the hike and bike trail. We'll go from basically Sonic area to uh, back to uh, Ash. Nothing has been defined, we turned in an application for a location, but until we start into this design, it has not been determined exactly where it's gonna go, how it's gonna cross over, all the crosswalk situations. That's what'll get more better defined now during construction, or design, I mean. So, it's that corridor is where we're gonna put a hike and bike trail on. Uh, this new hike and bike trail will be ten feet wide, that's what's required by this grant program. Uh, we will also not put it right back on the back of curb, so it will be offset to create a buffer between the curb and this new trail. So, that's for this design of this project, same thing, it's a slightly different department at KDOT that handles these, but in essence, it's the exact same thing, um, this, it, it comes out that the cost came out to be identical. Uh, when we turned in our hours for both, it just, that's just the way things worked out because of the way we designed our hours. So.
But in this case, the city's percent is?
Zero.
Zero.
Should've charged more on this. So, no, it's, it's just, we, so when we start into these processes, we, we're not allowed to put dollars amounts into these processes, we have to go through and fully design, or pre-design the project with hours. You know, how many engineer hours, how many tech and technician hours, surveyors, you know? And then we're allowed, after they approve our hours, that's what Matt had to approve, we have to get it approved by KDOT. Then they come back and say, okay, now you can put dollar signs to each of those individuals on the hours. Just so happened that we said, hey, it, it's gonna be about the same hours to do both of these, when we started looking through. Why it magically came out with the same amount.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, um, so ten feet, is that the same width as the existing trail that we have out to the hospital? That one's eight.
It, it was because when the, at the time that that one was awarded, the magic number for the feds was eight. In fact, Lou probably remembers this one. When we started that project, when we turned in the application, it was eight, when KDOT awarded it, the feds had increased it to ten, so they tried to force us to increase it to ten during construction or design and then into construction, but be- because that overage would have been all hundred percent city cost, we argued and, and got it kept at eight, so the city didn't have to pay for an extra two feet all along.
Yeah, kinda grandfathered it in.
Yeah.
So, ten feet width. And I'm envisioning that corridor, it seems a little tricky anywhere you go, so.
The tricky part's gonna be right up next to Ash. Um, just because on the pharmacy side, it's a little more sloped. And, but then, and then on the, we have right-of-way through that entire corridor to make it work. If we didn't have other physical things going on. Um, we obviously don't wanna probably stick on the north side very far because we have a lot of business, industrial-type businesses with a lot of entrances, that's, that's gonna conflict. So we do wanna jump over to the s- uh, to the north side, sorry, I was south side. We do wanna jump over to the north side as soon as we can, but how do we do that across the pharmacy and the implement dealer? You know, where do we pick that corridor, something we'll investigate and see how best we're gonna do. Once we get past the implement dealer, we get into what the city owns now the rest of the way around, where it's gonna be on that north side. At some point, we will cross over for the purposes of connecting Dollar General, I mean, that was one of the things, and that new housing that's going out there. To, to interconnect that back with everything else, we will, it's probably gonna be somewhere down there around the entrance to that housing, Dollar General area, we'll cross over with the crosswalk. Uh, we developed a hike and bike trail master plan. Not even before you got here, the first.
Yeah, the first one was, yeah.
We actually have like seven or eight trail plans for around the city, sometime I'll bring that back to the council, get it distributed, because we need to revisit it now if we've got a couple of these awarded. But it's stuff like Third Street, you know, having one on Third Street that connects this to the one that goes out on, to the hospital. It's creating one down around the, the rec complex, you know, the softball, uh, baseball, tennis, swimming pool, that whole corridor, it's kind of a, another trail system, so that eventually all these trails around the city are kind of interconnected. So we're just, we're knocking them off one at a time when we find a grant that works for them.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve the agreement with KDOT and EBH for the KDOT TA Grant Program. Councilman Jorgensen? Moves, is there a second? Councilman McCarty, seconds? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries, next, we have consideration of bids for Lincoln and Wilson Street construction.
Right, so on Lincoln and Wilson Streets, we bid it out, we actually had three uh, contractors submit bids. Vos Parga, uh, Prado, which is out of the Valley Center area, and Procon, which is out of Hutch. And uh, in, in looking, we, we bid it as a base bid, which is the basic streets on each one. We had an add alternate, and the reason we had the add alternate one was because uh, when Dale and I had reviewed the city's stockpile of crushed base material, we wanted to make sure we didn't completely run him out of that base material, so he always had some for other stuff he needed. So because we weren't exactly sure, we planned to possibly to have add alternate one as a backup, in case we run out of that base material, the contractor can supply base material for uh, Wilson, we know we're gonna have enough for Lincoln. Um, Wilson, we thought, okay, this gives us that backup option in case we start to run low. So, right now, we're not awarding add alternate one, we're not asking to, it's there as a number that we can go fall back on if we need it. Add alternate two, on, on Lincoln Street, uh, the sanitary sewer runs right down the middle of the street. And out of all, there's thirty-four houses on that three blocks of Lincoln. And we weren't sure before, if we were designing this and bidding this, uh, Morgan and Caleb hadn't been able to get them all cambered. So we said, hey, we need to plan on replacing the sewer taps from that sewer main up at least to the rightways. Because we're gonna put this nice new concrete street in, we don't have to dig it up in six months because some of these sewer tap went bad. They've cambered them since. Uh, we're able to get the results, instead of the thirty-four, there's only five we're gonna have to do. So add alternate two, that was gonna be a hundred, and I'm gonna use Vos Parga number, hundred and seventy-eight thousand five hundred is actually only gonna be twenty-five thousand. So the, so we're not gonna I've got a change order that's right behind this, in essence, we have to award for an amount, and then we'll do an immediate change order that brings it down to what we really think is gonna happen. So in essence, the, the bid, right now, the low bid was Vos Parga for nine hundred and seven thousand one forty-five on the base bid with a hundred and seventy-eight thousand five hundred on alternate two. That's what our recommendation for award is, and then like I said, we'll go over the change order here in a second that reduces both of those to what is gonna fit in our bond number. But that's and they were low bid, Vos Parga was low on both of those numbers. So.
Questions?
We also set this up so we will not have Lincoln torn up when there is bad weather. We've told them they cannot do that because anybody that lives or knows about those two streets, the east side of both of these streets have no secondary access, there are no alleys. So we phased it, so that we're no more than like eight houses, uh, six houses on each side at a time are gonna be out their front door. So we broke it into multi-phases, and then we've also said, hey, Lincoln cannot be down, we only give the contractor thirty working di- or calendar days, sorry, thirty calendar days in each, it's, they're gonna have to move fast. And that's so people aren't out of their house for a long time.
So the plan then is to do Wilson first?
Potentially Wilson first, if they wanna go ahead and start this fall. It would be to come in and do Wilson. And then Lincoln probably wouldn't happen until next spring. Not unless all of a sudden, weather. Not unless all of a sudden, weather.
Yeah, the weather is.
Seventy degrees all the way through January, well then, I try to get it done.
Questions? Okay, hearing none, the first action it looks like is to uh accept or award the bid that vote Parga submitted in the amount of one million eighty-five thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars. Somebody care to make that motion? Councilman Wilkins moves?
Second.
Councilman Jorgensen seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries, next action is to decrease the contract amount with change order number one to eight hundred sixty-six thousand nine hundred forty-nine dollars fifteen cents.
Basically what we did to get, come up with this change orders, number one, the add alternate two, we reduced that thirty-four taps to five. So we're saving twenty-nine tap fees, which saved us a hundred and fifty-two thousand two hundred and fifty on paper. Uh the other thing we did is to get down to the number where we could meet the bond level that we'd already preset up. Um on Wilson Street, we're gonna reduce the length of Wilson, we had planned to go driven out there, as you pass F Street, you kinda go over a little hill, and you start down towards the old sewer plant. We're, we had planned on going past that last driveway, or it goes to like three or four houses on the east, street name is private, so it really doesn't have a street name. Um we're gonna reduce that by about a hundred and eighty feet back to F Street. So we saving some money by not doing that last hundred and sixty, hundred and seventy feet. And then taking off contingency quantities that we had built in, uh that saves us the extra roughly sixty thousand above the sewer taps. Now, we might have to revisit some of those contingency quantities just a little bit as we move forward, but these two numbers got us down to where we are now basically right back in the bond money that we had preset up.
Would note that the the sewer, the sewer taps will be taken out of the sewer capital improvement. Sewer fund itself, so they won't come out of the bond money.
And that's roughly twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, it's not much at this point.
So that actually puts us under the bond money then at this point.
This is an opportunity to, if we have to adjust those quantities or contingency, maybe we have some room to do that.
I know, the only thing I foresee if we have to adjust the quantity is if for some reason we need to go around the curb on one of those intersections, another two panels of curb or something like that, might be we have to increase the curb quantity, or you know, something of that type of nature.
Well, I'm hoping that, uh you know, getting this thing going will uh keep us from delaying it any further than it already has been, because I know initially we had wanted this project done this year, and uh clearly that's not gonna happen.
Well, Wilson still could, and I I I anticipate Wilson.
That that's, that's half, that's not even half, because that's the easiest, that's the easiest part. But anyway, um so we have, uh we have the uh, the uh, I'm looking for a motion to uh to uh approve change order one, decreasing the contract amount to eight hundred sixty-six thousand nine hundred forty-nine fifteen. Councilman Bai moves, is there a second? Councilman McCarty seconds, any further discussion?
I do have a question. Um and I know we did the taps and all that, and you know, right now it's just five. So with having some more wiggle room, does that give us some leeway then, and you know, in case randomly another you know, someone else's needs to be replaced?
Oh, the sewer?
Yes.
They they actually, Caleb and Morgan did go camera, they had camera, they didn't, they had cameraed all of those taps down through there though, and every other one, the other twenty-nine are not clay. The only, those five are the only five clay taps left, so that's the only ones we're really worried about.
Okay.
So um that's why we went ahead and decided that those five need to be replaced. Right now, the contractor's scheduled to do that work, if for some reason, city wanted to save a little bit more money, they could go do it themselves, but that's, right now, it's on tap for the contractor to do it.
Good, thank you.
So if if something bad happened and we saw another one with problems, yes, it could be replaced at the time.
Okay.
And before we put a street back on top of it, yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Darren.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are uh not considering item eight this evening. Uh but we are moving on to item nine, which is appointment of voting delegates to the League of Kansas Municipalities Annual Meeting. Mr. Styles?
Sir, it's that time of year again, uh we've got the League of Kansas Municipalities Annual Meeting, and by uh by their rules, we are, we are allowed to have two voting delegates and two alternate delegates, in order to do that, we must have a formal adoption of those voting delegates to represent the city during the official business meeting, which will occur on Saturday, October eleventh, usually it's the last, kind of the last thing they do, so. Uh I've got a full slate of potential representatives this year, so we've got the mayor, we've got Jeff, Ronald, and Blake. Uh as well as my, as well as myself, and Danielle will be going to the Commerce, but I don't think you're gonna be there on Saturday, right? So, yeah, so. You don't wanna put Danielle in there unless you want her as an alternate. So uh what we need are two, two voting members. As a voting member, you'll be given a packet, uh you'll be allowed to vote during the meeting, um I don't know if there's anything particularly I don't know, I, I don't know if there's anything you need to know about what that is, but uh usually there's uh there's bylaw changes, uh sometimes they have the the policy things, the appointments, I would note that uh Mayor Lou's gonna be filling in a vacant position on the board, so.
I'm actually going to the board meeting in September down in Pittsburgh, and that's apparently when I will join the
Be on the board.
Join the board at that time, so.
So it's completely up to you, who wants that awesome responsibility to be the voting delegate? And then who will take on the responsibility of being the alternates?
So it's two delegates, right?
Two delegates, we get two votes, and then two alternates, should you be unable to fulfill your duties as the delegate, that alternate can step in and do that.
I I recommend the senior uh council people, Ronald and Blake.
I have no objections.
And you need two alternates, which I would recommend that that be you and Matt.
Right, I'm happy with that.
So is that uh complete your motion then?
Yes, that would be my motion.
Did you get that, Danielle?
I got it.
Okay, so we have a motion to select Blake, Councilman Bai, and Councilman Wilkins as voting delegates, and appoint Councilman Jorgensen and City Administrator Styles as alternate voting delegates for the twenty twenty-five LKM conference. Would somebody like to make that motion? Okay, Blake will second, we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, that went pretty well, thank you guys.
Nice and easy.
Yep. Okay, we're gonna just take a short break for a minute while Danielle goes and gets her computer from the uh computer folks that are updating.
Do we have water in there?
No.
But I did bring some uh Black Rifle Coffee, if somebody's interested in that.
Can refill some.
Go ahead, make yourself BRC.
It is suitable for consumption.
The tap water?
Yes, the tap water is excellent.
I'll get behind that.
I don't think I've signed those KDOT contracts.
So those are all digital.
Yeah.
So we gotta do.
I don't remember if I hit, I was in the change, I already signed them or not before.
I have no idea.
So when you look at them, let me know, because yes, they are all electronic, say it's signed now.
Yeah, Lou will have to get in and.
Yeah. You know, if I haven't, send them back to you.
Alright, yeah, it'll bump it back to you.
I think I did, but I don't remember.
I, yeah, don't know for sure, but I'll, I'll take a look, I will find out shortly, I know that.
There's something you've got that you wanna bring to the house?
Okay, yeah.
I'm guessing not, I don't see it. I mean, is there something you'd like the council to know, I think that would be more inappropriate for you to.
No, I had a question about.
Opinions known about it.
I was just curious, is the EPA cut off, cut back a bunch of their solar?
Right.
Federal stuff, I didn't know if that.
Sure.
EPA cut like a bunch of stuff. Somehow, if it was affordable, you know, crumpled it off my question, not the house.
Right, right, yeah.
But uh I don't know. There's a lot of different things, I mean, I could you know, if the city didn't wanna tear it down, I could do it, if if that was a option, but not that I want to. Excuse me, hell. It was a way to make it more enticing. City.
Okay.
I'm not sure what, what the rest of the.
Well, you know, at this point, you know, I'm not sure either, Ken, so what I would, what I would suggest is we're gonna have another opportunity for public comment here in a bit, and if you would uh if you would wanna, you know, just let the council know kind of what you're thinking. That'll help us when it does come back up before us, and we'll certainly keep you informed when it does, so that we don't take any action without you being aware of it.
Yeah, I was just uh because it was affecting me.
I get it. No, I understand completely.
Try to do something about it.
Right.
It's been that way for a long time.
Yeah, oh yeah. Yeah, and I wish, I wish I could say that was the only one like that around town. The only place where we didn't need to do stuff, but we've got a, we've got a list.
I mean, I never complained.
No, I understand.
I had, you know, that's just not my style.
I get it. But we're all after the same thing, which is uh improve the looks of our city and our own property and, you know. Well, sure.
Go for water in the coffee maker, where can I get?
It's in the sink, there's a little.
Okay.
Did I run you out, sorry?
Yeah, just a little.
Feel bad. Yeah, I can do that, that would be good.
Okay. Alright, you're welcome.
Huh?
They're pretty comfortable. Oh, yeah, I don't worry.
Is that right?
Yeah.
I'm a cop shoot.
Danielle, are you ready?
I always notice.
Okay, we'll wait till Ronald gets back with his coffee and then we'll.
My wife's actually my mother-in-law has a collection of Birkenstocks, they're all they're one model, like Arizona's or something like that. There are a hundred and fifty of them in my basement, a hundred and fifty pairs. That's like the retirement plan, I think.
Everything else hurts my feet after a while, finally, I said, why should I have to put up with it? Buy the one brand that does.
Buy, buy one.
Everything I own is Birkenstock.
I actually have a pair of, they make inserts too.
Yeah.
Not the same, but it's, it's close.
I'm lazy, I buy the
Me too.
Do you?
I got these, these are stepped in, right here.
They work pretty good. Well, it is like a build-in. I wonder who thought of that?
Spring one?
Yeah, the they should have probably got the extra money at the bonus for thinking of that.
I can't tell who's online with this.
Nobody. Kind of in between reporters, some sort of.
Okay.
We don't have anybody in the waiting room or anything, so.
Alright then. Nobody's trying to zoom bomb us tonight?
Nah, I got it locked out too.
There you go. I mean, how do they get in there? Don't they have to, they just?
Nah, it's public land, so.
Okay. We are uh back in uh, back in session here for our final business item, which is the approval of the twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty, wow, hard to imagine. Plan, Mr. Styles?
Yeah, thank you, sir, so this is uh, you've, you've all seen the, the actual content of it, but this is the uh the document that we had Cali put together, so we kinda leaned into the prairie theme a little bit here. Uh and I sent a copy of it out uh with a link, cause it is a Genomis file. Um so what we've got here, I I don't know how much you wanna go through, but it's set up for print, so there are some like blank pages in here uh too, so. Uh we had a poll, you know, we, we went and dug into the files to try to find some, some good uh action shots. One of the things I think that we've uh, she, she added this too, uh which I thought was really well-written, actually. We tried, one of the things I think we kinda missed when we did our website redesign is we went with pictures that didn't have any people in it, so it kinda looks like Hillsborough's a little bit of a ghost town. Um I think that was an error, uh we should've went with maybe some more of the pictures with people in them, there's some things with, you know, putting people on the internet, but, you know. Uh a lot of these have been, you know, these are can, they've all been consented to, because they're public pictures, but uh then we got a beautiful picture of y'all, so you remember when I told you to dress up for that day? Jeff understood the assignment. You did too, good.
Very good.
Um so we, we think there's steering committee there, uh we put in a special thanks to everybody, uh gave a shout out to Colin Hanson for helping us with that. Um and then we just sort of, we've got the, the mayor's word here on uh kinda framing the whole thing.
If I can, if you can go up, I think that's the wrong picture of Lou, you should've used the one when he was testing out the splash pad.
Oh, yeah.
There you go. Yeah, that, everybody knows already, I'm all wet.
Uh yeah, so we, you know, like I said, we went with kind of a prairie theme, we worked on this, put some kinda prairie imagery in the back, and then this is uh probably the biggest thing, when we talk about how it's our value section here, we went with that. Uh our tier one goals, all the things with housing, economic development, educational connections, I mean, the, the text here is all all the same as what we had before, we're just really looking at the visual pieces of it. Um got some updated photo, that's from the uh parade. So obviously, we've got like the most recent, latest and greatest photos included in here. Prairie community, and so we had a lot of things, we had, we were able to grab quite a few different pictures and, and do some other things with that, which is good. Uh I think it kinda tells the story in a way that is, is unique and attractive. Um we kinda broke it into these text blocks and put it in that way, so that we felt like it would read a little easier. Then our tier two stuff is just sustainability things, resilience, foundations, civic health, Built to Thrive. Again, we kinda pulled that whole motif of the prairie through the whole thing, got some stuff with the fire department and uh the childcare center and seniors, and uh there's Mayor Lou and I, coffee with the mayor. Yeah, so what we're, what we're looking to do today is, you know, if you're happy with how this came out, like I am, I think it looks pretty good. Uh we'll get some copies of it printed, uh I would like to get some signage for in here, that kinda has the the actual
Oh, yeah.
text of it in here, so that you guys can have it up here when you're, you know, having meetings and stuff, so. Uh but we're looking for an approval, if, if you find it to be something that is worthy of approval. For us to get it printed and, and distributed and put out on our website.
Can you stop right there for a second?
Yeah.
So that picture there, whoop, go up, or, yeah.
Yeah, this is an AI-generated picture of.
Oh, that's AI-generated, that's like, that would be like the staging area that's in the next phase.
The only thing that uh, that I didn't see there was the multimedia screen.
Yeah, there's nothing on there for multimedia screen, AI does have a few few blind spots when it comes to that, this is actually like the fourth iteration. So, yeah.
Did Cali do a lot of the work on this, graphic?
Yeah, she did, uh she messed with all the pictures, got everything kinda worked out, and the background graphics, so those are all Cali.
Right.
Uh she did a great job with it, we use, we use Canva, which is like an online platform for a lot of our graphic design stuff, and so people build all that in Canva. Um a lot of these pictures, you know, they're, they're things that we have, but we also were able to get some from um just a lot of different sources, and then we actually went out and took a few new ones too, so. Says they're groundbreaking for Orchard Bridge. Yeah, so that's, that is what we came out with, I think it, I'm, I'm pretty happy with how it looks, how it came out. Everything in there is exactly like what we've talked about. When we do updates, we probably won't have as nice visuals, we'll just kinda do more of a spreadsheet type thing, but yeah, I think this is, this is the forward-facing document, this is what it looks like, this is where we're gonna go with it, if you're, if you're all on board.
Feel real comfortable with it.
Good, I think it looks amazing.
Reflects our work.
Hey. So if somebody care to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five dash twenty thirty strategic plan? Councilman Bai, like that one moves? Moves.
Second.
Councilman Jorgensen seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? The motion is approved and, uh, it is a good-looking plan. And I want to thank everybody in this room for their participation in the plan and putting it together. You know, we took some time and I felt like we did it in a very deliberate, thoughtful way. And I'm excited because, uh, as you all are aware, the first strategic plan we did really led us to accomplish some really great things. And I'm thinking we're gonna see the same from this one, so. And appreciate Cali and her design talent.
I know, and I don't know if we can extend, you know, just a great thanks to Colin for coming down too and helping with that.
We'll give him an autograph copy.
Very good. Okay, we've got some discussion items tonight. Uh, first is our budget discussion, Styles.
And try to pull this up. I'm gonna do the presentation piece of it. Um, so I sent you a copy of the of the actual budget sheet since you kind of had some, some of the background stuff. We do have a, um, like a line item budget that we do internally. Uh, when we go through this and meet with everybody, I don't usually give that out to everybody because, um, it gets pretty deep in the weeds and I don't know that that's something you really want to do. Um, I'm, I'm more than happy to sit down individually with somebody and do that, but I don't usually want to argue or, you know, toilet paper and pencils in a, in a public meeting. I don't know that that's really helpful. So. Um, so you've got that. Uh, where we came out was a little bit less. I, as I mentioned, I think last time we will be published it at forty-two, but we came in at, uh, thirty-nine. I can't remember where we're at exactly, a little under that actually. So. Um, but this is the presentation for you. I went back and reworked it. Um, here's just the assessed valuation growth. So you can kind of see how that has worked out. And I added some, uh, slide that you didn't get that talks a little bit about the history of how this looks and how that, how those trends are, are going. So. Assess valuation, the big thing with this, going in the right direction, uh, we're growing. Uh, the assessed valuation is so, uh, four point four three percent is what we have figured for the compound annual growth rate. I use that as a calculation for growth. I think that's a little bit more accurate when you get down to how that works. Um, since twenty, since twenty twenty, we've increased about twenty-nine percent, so thirty percent almost on that. Uh, biggest jump was between twenty-five and twenty-six, or excuse me, was between, uh, twenty-four and twenty-five, so. Got that right there. These are all kind of normal things you've seen before. So what we ended up with. Um, what we adopted last year was forty-two point two nine four. Uh, once the abstract came in in November, they reduced that for us. Uh, down to forty point nine. Uh, point nine one two. Um, when we talked last time, we were under, under forty. That was because they hadn't factored in the recreation commission. Shows up at, at point nine four five. So what I'm proposing here tonight is, uh, thirty-nine point five seven seven. Um, did a little bit of work, sharp under pencil, got it down. Uh, that would be a reduction from what was actually levied, uh, by one point three five, three, three, five mils, which for the average taxpayer, which is, we, we look at the average home, uh, it's about a hun- a little over a hundred thousand. That'd be about fifteen bucks, fifteen forty-five a year. Uh, compared to what they were paying. Um, so what's that look like? The, really the, the thing where you have the most flexibility, you know, we, we levy the general fund debt services, debt service. You really don't have a whole lot of options with that library. We're, we are at four mils with that because that's what our ordinance says with that. Industrial is sort of the same thing. Special law enforcement, same deal, recreation commission, they're all at one. They all says. Peg those at one, work the debt service of what it is and the general fund with leftover. Um, so when you look at what the general fund looks like, this is kind of how it breaks out. Um, personnel represents sixty-seven percent. Uh, contractual obligations, things that we, a lot of the services that we buy is thirteen percent. Uh, commodities, the actual consumable things that we use in the course of our work is only fourteen percent. Capital outlays, we spend about two percent. And then the transfers when that, uh, that is a result of moving mo- money into the capital improvement plan or over into the, um, equipment reserve fund that pays for leases for the vehicles and things like that. Um, that represents four percent of the total. So, uh, proposed authorities is just over three million dollars this year. So we talked about the revenue neutral rate, the revenue neutral rate. If we were wanting to get to revenue neutral, three thirty-seven point nine eight nine. So what that means is we'd have to find about forty thousand dollars, uh, one and a half mils. Uh, which would save the average taxpayer about another eighteen dollars. Got some options, put some options out there. You, you, you talked about having a few options. Uh, if you're gonna do it, you could eliminate the ten thousand in cash that we give at senior center and maybe look at doing something similar to what we're proposing with the childcare center. I don't think that would shake out to the full ten thousand. I think they would actually probably prefer to keep the cash, but. Uh, that would be an option. That would be one of the things. Uh, ten, you could take ten thousand out of the city improvement project funding. Which is what we, we kind of tagged for those high school class improvement projects, but they're not really doing those right now. So you could take that out. Uh, you could reduce the transfer to the capital improvement, uh, to thirteen thousand from twenty-three. You know, you're just kind of not, that's, that's money you put aside for capital improvement things. And that would get you thirty-ish thousand dollars. You'd still need some more. Um, eliminate, you could, you could eliminate museum operations. At one point it was run by volunteers. Um, we haven't run it that way for a number of years, but be an option. Uh, you're still gonna incur some costs there. You could save about thirty thousand if you did that. Uh, you could reduce pool operations, which I would highly suggest not doing because it's extremely, that's a, that's a hot button issue. Uh, thirty to forty percent, you could cut down the time we're open. You could save about twenty-five thousand. Uh, you can eliminate the PD transition to KPNF, which would be about fifty thousand. I, I wouldn't recommend necessarily doing that either. I feel like that's a pretty solid investment for our future growth within the police department. Uh, there are employee raises in here. Um, the part that impacts the general fund, you could go from what we've got budgeted in there is four percent. Uh, you could drop it to two. That would save you roughly forty thousand dollars, or you could delay how you implement that. So you could say, we're not gonna do cost of living. We're gonna do uh, merit increase. And you know, as you push it out, the, the four percent that's budgeted in there is for if you were to do it, four percent January one. That's how I budgeted it. I was super conservative on the employee side this year. I did not dial it in. I've just, there's so many unknown things. I wanted to make sure that we covered employees on that one. And so you could, you could pull that back a little bit if you wanted to. Um, I'm, I'm not necessarily recommending that, but you could do that. Uh, and then the, the other option is you could always increase revenue, uh, by a combination of fee increases, or you could transfer my money out of the utilities. I wouldn't, I think we're pretty good where we're at. So I wouldn't feel super great saying we should do that. Honestly, I don't necessarily think you need to, to hit that revenue neutral rate. I don't know that it does a whole lot of good. Um, it's a number that's put out by the state. You know, it's theoretical. It's, you know, here's what it is for, for those things. The truth of the matter is that City Hillsborough is basically a, a utility company that has a general fund. So a, a lot of our core operations, the biggest chunk of what we spend is in the utility side. Revenue, you know, the general fund side pays for public safety primarily. And then things like quality of life, things like recreation, the pool, the golf course.
Art streets in there.
Streets, the street department is in there. Um, and then you have administration costs. You have this cost for this group. I mean, there's things like that in there, but you know, it's really, it's a utility thing. The only reason that, that streets would fall under there is because it doesn't generate any money. It's not a utility fund.
That's right.
Um, anyway, so those are kind of how that looks. If you want to get to that, we, I could probably get you there. I'm not recommending necessarily you do that. I feel like we've got it down to a pretty reasonable amount. It's actually a reduction.
So Matt?
Yeah.
So we're, what I'm understanding is already saving basically fifteen dollars per taxpayer going to revenue neutral rate just adds another eighteen dollars. So we already have a savings at the recommended mill of thirty-nine point five seven seven. And this is just additional if we go revenue neutral. Okay.
So then, uh, I, what I did was I pulled that for the total tax bill. We kind of have these charts before where we looked at what that would look like. Uh, so I took, uh, from our revenue neutral hearing statements, what those actually would be if they were to be adopted. You, you can tell that it doesn't really change that much. Uh, where you would see it if everything went as, as was in those statements, the county would go down one percent and the school district would go up one percent. So. Uh, yeah, it's, it's marginal. That, how that actually looks dollars and cents wise, here's what that would be. Um, tax bill, the city side. Again, it was four seventy-three, we dropped down to four fifty-eight. Uh, the counties where there's cutting the most, um, from eight forty-four to eight oh eight, they're, they're the biggest chunk anyway. So that, that kind of makes some sense. They maybe would have some more room there. Uh, so your proposed tax bill is gonna go, if everything was to go as it was printed on those notices. It would go from, uh, two thousand sixty-nine dollars to two thousand eighteen dollars for a hundred thousand dollar house. Of course, when you talk about, uh, how, how property is valued, you know, my house is not a hundred thousand dollar house. Your house may be less than that, maybe more than that. The valuation may have changed differently. We can't really factor all those things in, so we just use the median value. That's kind of how we do it. Uh, this is an ad slide. This is one of the things that we kind of wanted to get a better beat on as far as property tax history. So I pulled back ten years of property tax. Uh, on the left-hand side there, you have the assessed valuation. So kind of what that looks like for a ten-year period versus what we've had before, which was a six, six periods. Um, you can kind of see where that looks like. You know, we've, sorry for the numbers being kind of small over there on the, on the axis there, but. Um, from fifteen all the way up to twenty twenty-four, which is the previous tax year, uh, that we have. You can kind of see how it's grown. It's been pretty steady, three point six four percent. There's good years and bad years there, obviously. Uh, but the, the thing there is that, that dash line or that dotted line is the trend line. So it's going up. Uh, the total mill levy, if you kind of pull back and look at what that is, um, you can kind of see how that's evolved over the last those, those same ten periods. Um, so from, from fifteen, you know, it kind of went up and then are, are we peaked in two thousand nineteen at forty-six point two six mils? Uh, two, six, nine mils. And then with proposed, well, actually what we adopted last year, we dropped back down. Um, it's about what it was in twenty fifteen, honestly. And it, it'll actually be a little bit lower if you approve the, the proposed budget. It'll be slightly lower than that. So. What you have here is that trend line and it's going the right direction on that too. It's headed down. Um, so. You know, it's probably more dramatic looking than it actually is because you're, you're talking about a range of somewhere between forty and forty-six. So the range is actually not that big, but. Um, it's pretty consistently in that range. I think that's the important thing there. So you can kind of see that we're not, we're not going crazy every year. You know, as things have gone up, costs have gone up too, but we've managed to keep it pretty well similar to what is in that range and actually reducing it some, so. That's, uh, that's, that's kind of the history since you kind of understanding what that is. Um, outside funding, we've been pretty aggressive in that as well. So since middle half of twenty twenty, that's, that's when my, my, my history with the city starts. That's what I pulled. Um, we've had four point six million dollars in grant funding. Um, that doesn't include the COVID aid, uh, which we all, all cities got based on population. So what we did with that, we tore down the red brick building. I don't know if you guys remember that one. Uh, we tore that one down. We built the community plaza restrooms. That was six hundred and thirty thousand dollars we used for that. Uh, we had donations and city labor to use for the Larry Payne Memorial Splash Pad at the community plazas. There was a hundred and sixty-five thousand there that doesn't factor into that. That amount, that grant money. Um, the projects we've done with that, water treatment improvements, community development block grants. So that did the the childcare center and the, and the one twenty-six project. We've had multiple KDA grants for road improvements. That includes Adam Street. Uh, the hospital trail was kind of right in the middle of that one. We were doing, actually that one's not in here. That one's not in here. And then we've got the two that we just approved tonight for those contracts. So those are factored in there. Oh, the LED streetlight upgrades, park improvements. We got some smaller ones for that. Business assistance during COVID, we got a hundred and fifty thousand that we distributed to businesses, directly to businesses. Um, and that helped out. What we do, like ten of those, something like that. Um, we did public art. We had a mural. We had entrepreneurship store at the bowling alley. Uh, we've added after-school programming, programming, uh, developments to do a community application. Uh, promotion in the community, environmental evaluations. We've done a lot of money in environmental evaluations using brownfields. Um, property, long-range planning, other projects, just a lot of other things. A whole lot of stuff that if we hadn't had that great money, we wouldn't have been doing. And we've also aided in securing about another million and a half in childcare stuff. So we're real aggressive with outside funding. I'm pretty happy to say. Uh, I don't think we're gonna back down on any of that. And we didn't really factor a whole lot of that into this budget. But we just wanted to make sure that that was underscored, that we do in fact look for money outside of our normal taxing authority. So. Uh, and I think we've been really successful with that. Okay, so I can walk you through kind of what the general fund stuff is. These are all the funds, just so that we have an un- understanding. Everybody understands what's in there. Uh, increase of golf fees, we kept revenue pretty much flat. Uh, increased the golf cre- golf fees for the carts and the motor replacements. Uh, we'll review fees in November along with our utility rates for consistency, but I don't anticipate there being a huge jump there. Uh, personnel again is sixty-seven percent of the general fund. We do have wage increase. So you guys will have to determine how you want to split that up. Um, we do transition, transition KPNF is in there for PD employees. It is an expensive investment, but I do feel like it's a solid investment for future of the PD. Uh, we did streamline parks and recreations. We smashed three of those departments together because really that's how they function anyway. Uh, so parks, sports complex, museum got put together. One, we'll have to kind of adjust our chart of accounts to make sure that that was reflected there, but that's how it budgeted in the form. Um, provided additional funding for limited equipment, smaller capital improvements. I kept it pretty pretty small this year because I honestly, the biggest thing that scares me is I have no idea what the economy is gonna do. Things may be great. Things may be fine. They may float around. Things, prices might jump fifteen percent on some stuff. We don't know. Um, so I try to play it as, as conservative as we could while maintaining all the current service levels. Uh, so that's kind of how we did that. The general fund, you have any questions about what's in the general fund based on what's in the sheet? I think the, the take-home message is we kept everything pretty consistent with what we're offering. We didn't cut service or anything.
I think it's pretty clear that through the, uh, ability to, uh, obtain outside funding to support our projects in addition to some significant gains and efficiency in the way we operate has helped us maintain where we're at. And actually, you know, we have a better operating city. I feel like today than when I started, you know, eight years ago. And, uh, this is the lowest proposed mill levy since I've been mayor, which I'm very excited about. And the idea that we could do that all and not, uh, and actually lower people's tax bill a little bit. You know, it's pretty exciting to me. I mean, any, anything further starts cutting into a bone. And I think that, uh, I don't think that's prudent.
You know, I, I have to agree. And you know, and, you know, I feel like people recently have just gotten used to things going up and up in price. So I think it is nice that we are able to at least give them something back in property taxes while, like you said, maintaining our services. And I think that's a big thing for me. You know, a quote that you like to mention is that, you know, no one, no one ever I'm gonna paraphrase it, but you know, never, they don't want us to do less for the city.
Yeah, nobody has.
You know, so the fact that we're able to do what we're doing and give, and decrease the mill levy, I think is fantastic.
I think it's nice that we can also keep the same people around working for the city, which helps us because you don't have to train new people.
Yes.
They know what they're doing and they're all pretty good at their job.
Yeah.
I agree. I think that's, that's been a big part of our efficiency as well. And, uh, getting, leveraging that experience and also new people, new blood. And to, uh, to come up with new ideas on how to do things, I think is, has been, uh, extremely beneficial. Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm, I've already told Matt I'm excited about this, this revised budget. And for me, I'm in full hundred percent supportive of it. And, uh, I would not be supportive of cutting, cutting more out of it at this point. That's just.
Some things is gonna help us find help and some of the people quit, dude.
Police department's gonna be tricky.
I mean, I would like to, you know, extend my thanks to you and the staff, you know, department heads and one night we're sitting down and, you know, real. I mean, I would like to, you know, extend my thanks to you and the staff, you know, department heads and one that we're sitting down and, you know, really. Let me like to go through the weeds and what we can go without and what we really need and just finding it ways to fine-tune the budget even more. So I do thank you for that.
I will, I will share that with our department. They're pretty good, truthfully, you've got good people.
I think Jesse has done a pretty good job of keeping his budget down.
Ah, yeah, he's pretty tight.
Yeah, I mean, I was. When he worked for me, he was wanting to get stuff, but I think.
Is there anything else we need to talk about budget-wise at this?
Well, I've got more slides, but if you don't want to go through them, that's totally fine.
I mean, you know, is there anything that, I mean, I think you've hit the, hit the highest.
Yeah, that's the high stuff.
Yeah.
Um, I would say, I mean, I, it gets real deep, but the only thing I would say is we probably will look at a rate adjustment in the electric side this year. And it may just be kind of how we do some of the things with that, with the um. Uh, cost adjustment side, we actually have it in the ordinance now, we just never done it, uh, we may want to look at some of that. There's some things with Evergy and the transmission rates that could potentially be impactful for us too, so we're kind of watching that, trying to figure it out. Um, otherwise, it's pretty straightforward, other, all the other rates, I'm I'm not really thinking we're gonna have to do too much with. So those will probably be the the only one we might want to look at is electric, so. Um, as far as timeline goes, this, we're having this meeting right now, reviewing it. Feels like it's pretty good, but uh what we'll do is we'll kind of have it standing on our meeting agendas, uh, we'll have the first. Meeting in September, it'll be back on there, it'll be another opportunity to kind of tweak if you want to. Uh, we'll publish the public hearing notice on the third, and then the actual budget hearing and the revenue neutral rate hearing will be on the sixteenth. Uh, some dates to remember there, the last day we could possibly have a hearing is the twentieth, so if you get a wild hair and decide we need to have a special meeting, that's your last day. Uh, and that budget has to get to the the clerk's office by the first, so. That's about all I got, if you don't want to.
Um, I don't know if this is the right place to bring it up, if I should wait later or not, but uh, have you? Know your schedule's busy, uh, have you been able to talk with um Brenda Moss at the senior center?
Not at any length, no.
Yeah, um, I mean, I would like, and if the, of course, and if the council agrees with me. Uh, you mentioned the city improvement project that's hasn't really been touched that much. Um, if we could maybe move, I don't know, depending on how things go and what is needed, but maybe. Increasing what we can provide to the senior center, uh, would that be?
Yeah, I mean, it's it's discretionary money, so if you wanted to.
Might be something that uh we would want to consider, the extra on a uh, on a year-by-year basis.
Yeah.
You know, just having them set the expectation. But I'm sure they have a project or two they'd probably like to do, if there was some extra funds available.
Wonder if we could get her to come in and talk to us sometime about how everything's going there.
I could definitely ask, um.
You can ask.
Brenda's not much for public speaking, we'll say that, um, but you may be able to get, you can probably get a board member, the chairman of the board, chairperson. Jared is on there, um. Not the chair, he's on their their advisory board.
You might be all right, I mean, you know, you can talk to us.
Yeah, he can talk to you for sure. Some uh, I can't remember who the person is right now, blanking on the. It changes every year. Betty used to be, she's a firecracker, but she is no longer the the chairman of that, or the chairperson. But we can, I'll ask.
Oops.
Oopsies.
Oh, no. Well, that is all me, I've got a rather named, I do have notes from that.
Okay, I would like to uh ask the council's permission to uh interrupt our discussion. And uh, cause he's sat here very patiently, uh, Ken Clever's here and and he would like to address the council on some property that's. Around him that that I believe is gonna be coming up before the council at some point.
Okay.
And uh, so I'm gonna ask that we give uh him his public comment opportunity right now. So that he can stay here for another half hour while we wrap up, if that's okay.
I gotta connect to work.
Yeah.
Hey, thank you very much for letting me sit down. But uh, yeah, uh, the property I believe is. Uh, North Washington. It's gonna be coming up for demo, I believe, but I'm not sure what they, what's going on there yet. And uh, I just noticed things were kind of moving fast there, and so I got concerned. Uh, you know, the the future of that and and I was just uh. Considering trying to acquire the property so that I could have control of what happened there. Obviously, I don't want the house there, the house needs to go and all that, so, and that's, that's about it. I'm 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 probably too soon in this, in this process, but I just want to get in on it.
So, and then from your perspective, if the house were gone, would what you would like is, you would like to to uh. Maintain and keep that property and keep it up to city code and.
Correct, yeah, and and you know, really, it's something, something's gonna have to happen there because I've got this. This little binky little house here, I've got two narrow properties on both sides of me. And so what's gonna have to happen eventually is it's gonna have to get, my house is gonna have to go or. No further development, there's, I have to make that into either to, uh, probably just cut it in half and put it in two sections. Which makes more sense, but uh, you know, you know, I'm the guy that's there in the middle, keeping everybody else from. From going forward, then that puts me kind of in an ar- spot, I think, so.
Any questions for Mr. Clever?
So you, uh, the plan would be just to have that empty lot, it's right next to your property, just to have that empty?
Or, or develop.
Oh, North Washington.
Okay.
Just south of third, on the east side of the street.
Yeah, it's been like that for a while.
Yeah.
Twenty, yeah, twenty-five here.
Well, I know you probably haven't had a chance and and we didn't spend too much time on our strategic plan, but cleaning up. The city and then some of our dilapidated properties is a big part of our new strategic plan, so. That's uh, that's an important thing that that we're gonna be working on, so I appreciate you coming and uh sharing your concerns and. You know, and offering, I guess, your assistance at some point in the process, so.
Right, well, thank you so much.
Yep. Have a good evening, Ken.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Now we're gonna move back into discussion and we have municipal policy one-ten regarding utility rates. For the H four C facility, Mr. Steins.
Yes, sir, so this is actually uh kind of located within the strategic plan that we approved, um, so what this is, I I brought it up. Couple meetings ago too about the potential there, we've got in the strategic plan uh to support. The, both the senior center and the uh, the daycare center, so uh, one of the ways I think that would be best for supporting the daycare center. Would be to to just put them on the city's internal rate um for our utilities, what we charge ourselves for utilities. Uh, my estimation is it's about a fifteen thousand dollar savings per year. Um, what that would do, the primarily through electric, uh, we charge ourselves six and a half cents a kilowatt hour for electric, um. So what this policy does is put, you know, directs us, the city staff to. Uh, put them on a a, an internal rate as an internal customer, uh, thereby saving them utility costs. So it's not a direct financial, it's not a direct financial contribution like you do for the senior center, but it, what it does is uh, you know, provide that. That relief on utilities, um. So, and we're also recovering our costs with that too, so we're not really out anything, we're just not gaining them as a customer like at a full commercial rate. Um, and so that was kind of, that was the, that was the thought process behind that, um. It's pretty straightforward policy, uh, we do that. We, we don't do it for anything other than internal city customers, and of course, you'd have to, if you wanted to do this for anybody else, like I mentioned, for the senior center. You could do that, but you'd have to include that policy as well, so. Um, what it does, the policy specifically outlines those rates, it's designed in such a way that if you were ever to adjust the city's internal rate, it would adjust with that. Um, it goes, you know, as as it moves forward and it would stay in effect until you said otherwise, so you have to take an action to. To take that away, if that's something that you wanted to do, um, it would only follow as long as that place is a. Uh, child, community childcare center, uh, has to be under that, that not-for-profit umbrella, and so. If, I guess theoretically, they could sell it to a for, for-profit interest, I'm not sure he would buy it, but could, um. You know, that would cease to be as well, so it kind of has those, those different provisions within that, so this is a discussion item. I wanted to put it out there, it's in the strategic plan, um. It's just, just an option, I think, kind of addresses that without putting the city in a financial, financially challenging position, so.
That's great, I'm glad we continue with our strategic plan and uh supporting the the daycare center, so I think that's great.
Yeah. I agree. No, I mean, and, sorry.
No, no, it's fine, yeah, it's it's just a draft, so if you wanted, I mean, if you liked it the way it was, you could approve it, I guess, but. It's designed to be a discussion item, so if there's things you need to change, just, we would bring it back for future action.
Yeah, I mean, you already covered it by stating that, you know, as long as it remains a nonprofit, you know, they would be. On the internal rates, I mean, I think that's just a big thing for me, so. It's making sure that, I guess, giving it to a benefit. Giving the benefit to an entity that isn't necessarily seeking profit, that's reinvesting its money back into, you know, community and whatnot, so I. Yeah, I think it's fine.
Does require them to also provide us with an annual report, while I would provide the council with an annual report detailing the savings and utility usage. So you'd have an idea of what that actually is. Um, right now, I don't know that we have had a great bead on what that'll look like, because it's, the center's operating, but it's not operating in its fullest capacity. Or what we anticipate the capacity to be by the end of the year, so that might change a little bit, I just took kind of based on what I saw and. Kind of what the other daycare was using and kind of put those numbers together, made a best guess, so fifteen thousand is kind of a ballpark. I don't know if that's accurate or not at the end of the day, but we'll see.
What are the numbers there right now?
Oh, yeah, then twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, start with, they pick up some uh this week, I think they picked up something this week.
Yes.
Uh, they'll pick up a few more as things go, and then once they get certified for uh DCF funding, they'll pick up a handful more. And then there are people who are pregnant and having babies, that by the end of the year, that whole room will be filled, and so. Uh, it's supposed to be somewhere around fifty-five, sixty-ish.
Okay, so are still really around that sixty?
Yeah, I think it's still pretty close to that, there may be some folks that kind of weren't, they did lose a few people, you know, with the delays in construction because. They've, they've went around and found some here, they found some here, figured it out, so, um, there's a couple. Couple drops there, but I think it's still in the sixty range. So that would give a, uh, it can go up to ninety-nine, once the final license is approved, so there's still thirty-ish spots. And they're talking about after-school stuff.
That sixty-ish number is still about twenty more than I think we ever had at uh, at Kid's Connection. Cause their max was fifty, and I don't think we ever got to the max, so I was thinking that was in the forties, you know, at its highest.
Pretty.
And so, we're already increasing that with the capacity, you know, ultimately to go up to ninety-nine, which uh, still uh. Pretty, pretty big benefit.
Seems like a swap, but I don't think it will be that hard to get to it, honestly, once it kind of gets more established.
I I I do want to say that uh, that uh, that, you know, not everybody in town. Is on, necessarily on board with the idea of a community daycare, believe it or not. And uh, Matt and I, you know, did uh have a constituent reach out to us, and in particular was concerned about. The cost to the taxpayer of the, the daycare center. You know, and not just today, but what it might look like in the future, you know, if we need to continue to prop it up, if you will. So there was some concern expressed there, and also a concern regarding low-income housing and and uh. Matt copied me in because uh, this person is is was, you know, made a, I was made aware of it, so Matt copied me on his response. But he did a very good job of explaining, the number one, the city is not supporting H four, it's not a city. Run daycare, it's, it's a not-for-profit, and uh, the housing development that's going in is not low-income, it's. Moderate income or workforce income, if you will, type housing, so, you know, it's, that housing actually is for anybody. And anybody can, you know, whether you meet the income requirements or not, I mean, if you don't, if your income's higher. Then uh, then then you can get, you know, a subsidy, a rate for, you can still rent, you know, so. Anyway, so just wanted to put that out there because, you know, I was kind of taken aback, actually. And I'm not gonna share this person's name, but I was taken aback by, by, by that. Because it was such a strong part of our strategic plan, and you always like to think that everybody's all on board with. With everything we do, but that's not always the case, and in this case, it wasn't, so.
Yeah, well.
Kudos to Matt for coming up with a very reasoned and in-season response, you know, to uh, to their concerns.
Well, I mean, especially because, I mean, as far as city-wise, I mean, it's a huge investment, because with the childcare. There's your opportunity for people looking for a new community to move to, they see this childcare, there's a job, so they have somewhere. You know, that can watch their kids so that they can actually go to work, whereas otherwise, they may pass up on moving here for a different location. I mean, I know there's quite a few businesses that, I mean, I know Barkman Honey is one, the hospital's one. That one issue of getting workers is, you know, due to a lack of childcare, and I mean, I know we, I mean, the hospitals had um. Recently, one person leave due to a lack of childcare, so, I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, I, I think it is a. Benefit for the city, and I think it really does tie, tie well in helping us to thrive and to continue growing, so.
Hundred percent, hundred percent, you know, but, you know, again, you know, we like to think that uh, everybody's a hundred percent on board, but. As uh, I've shared with you my Texas story of the sign on Interstate twenty, that talks about uh. Welcoming people to Stanton, Texas, home of eighteen-hundred friendly folks and a few old soreheads. And there's, there's always a few old soreheads, that's just, that's just the nature of it, of human, humankind, so. Anyway, um, and speaking of uh daycare, we have one, so I guess, before we move on from this. I'd like to ask the council, do you want this brought back up, do you need this tweaked, or are you ready to take action tonight? On this, on, on the electric rates.
I feel like I have to abstain, so.
But it's okay.
Yeah.
But I don't have concern.
I'm fine taking action tonight, if we can take action on that document.
That, is there anything you need to present to us that we would, that would prevent us from taking action? Cause I mean, we can just push it, push it to the next meeting if you'd rather.
Uh, no, you can, I mean, you can do it now, as far as I'm concerned, I'm probably not gonna recommend any changes to it, your opportunity to make changes.
Thinking of it, I think Todd should actually add in maybe a kill switch specifically for the director's office. That is accessible, just here in, in the city.
I don't know if it needs to be in the policy.
Hey, so would somebody care to make that motion? Hey, so would somebody care to make that motion?
Yeah, I move that we adopt policy one-ten, setting daycare facility use utility rates.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those abstaining?
Abstaining.
All those against? The, uh, municipal policy one-ten is hereby approved. Good job, Mr. Styles. And then finally we have a late addition, but also concerning the daycare and this involves a concerned citizen and I'll. Let you, uh, give some background on it.
Yeah, um, so once, once we started. We, we've kind of talked about the issue a couple of different times at the staff level and, and some concern about. Uh, traffic around the daycare center. Um, anytime you have. A collection of where kids are going to be, there's always a little bit of concern that you may have people. Uh, going too fast. Uh, I think that specifically was what the case was here. We had a citizen reach out to us who lives in that area and thought. Uh, people were maybe moving too faster on those residential streets. Um, it's thirty mile an hour speed limit. Um. I don't, I don't, I don't know that we know exactly what that is because we, we get complaints about people speeding a lot. A lot of times, uh, residential areas. And then that may or may not be. What's actually happening there. Um, but the concern is there because there are kids that are going to be moving around in there. Uh, now they're all pretty well contained, um, but you never know when you might have a, a random one run out into the street. Kids are unpredictable. You never can tell. Um, and so the question was, well, you know, what are we going to do with the traffic around there? Uh, I don't know that it's. Static capacity, you may see more people, you're gonna see more people coming in now. Um, so the question was, well, what will we do if we could step up enforcement? Had kind of mentioned he would do is sort of observe that. Uh, my, my, my view on it was, well, let's, let's observe it and see if there's, is actually an issue. Um, one option you could do is to, to put it into a, a, like a school zone because it's technically.
Falls under that.
Well, not technically, no, it's not technically preschool. We have preschool curriculum and. Uh, infant curriculum, all the way down to the infant curriculum. Um. So I don't know what the, what the regulations are with that or what we could do. We have to look into that.
But if, if you think it's.
Makes sense.
It feels like it makes sense.
I mean, if it's a good idea to have school zones around our elementary and middle high school. Why wouldn't that, why wouldn't we do it?
Yeah.
Put some speed bumps in there. That'll.
Oh.
Are they hurt?
And you. You're gonna make some serious friends over in the street department if you do that.
Yeah, no, they're making some good friends, weren't you? Maybe slow it down.
Yeah.
Well, you know, I think, I, I definitely think we need to look at it and, uh. And we need to consider, and you know, possibly, you know. I know. Know that there's any reason for people to cross the streets around there, but. You know, maybe there should be a crosswalk in there somewhere as well.
Yeah, well, lights, right?
Yeah. Well, yeah, we, there's. There's sidewalks that could lead up to.
Yeah, I mean, there are quite a few parents that will come and walk and pick up their kids and whatnot.
Not sure where you put it. We'd have to look at that a little bit more closely.
But, uh, yeah, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to see us do something about that.
Talk, I'll talk with Andrew about whether that's permissible or not and figure out what we can do. And then.
In general, the S T O says whatever signs we put up for, for traffic enforcement are enforceable. So, I, I mean. I just don't know whether there's a specific rule respect to those schools out, so.
I don't think you put school, but you can always reduce the speed limit.
Yeah. Yeah. Traffic zone or something. Yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll look into that. I'll talk more with, uh, Chief Heard a little bit about what he's, what he's observed over there, what his, what his crews observed over there and we'll kind of go from there. Uh, we'll have to, if we're going to change the speed limit, we will have to do that by ordinance. So we'll have to bring that back to you. Is it by order? Yeah. Speed limit zones are by order? I don't, that's a good question. I don't know that it is. Uh, we'll have to look at that though.
I'm not sure that it is. Planning commission.
You can just kind of post.
Recommend it, then we could approve it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can send it to the planning commission too, if that's something you wanted to do.
I, I don't, to be.
I don't know that you need that.
I don't know why we would need to take their time up on that. I think, I think it's.
Just do it.
Yeah, I think it's one of those things. If the chief feels. You know, he, he and Dale can get together and see where they would need to sign that, need to put it so that we make sure people are slowed down. At and around the proximity of the speed bumps. Yeah.
Man, I don't want to put speed bumps in that.
You know, this brings up, like you said, you, um. Notice people would speed down by, um, splash pad as well. Is that still occurring too?
Oh, every day. Washington Street Speedway?
Not well about to. But the, the intersection right there by the dealership, I mean, people are flying right down there by the splash pad. And somebody like, somebody's going to get hit.
Washington and A Street.
Yeah.
No.
Like just right there, right by the splash pad.
And I don't, and I don't know off the top of my head what the speed limit is. I don't know if it can even be reduced at all, but.
Could be.
Okay.
Sign, I mean, you can reduce it and sign it.
It helps that they put the stop signs there.
Yeah.
But. People don't.
Uh, I just figure if we're already discussing. Reducing speed for children are, I know you mentioned people speeding down there. So I don't. And I mean, obviously in speed, I mean, people see speed limit signs as just as suggesting anyway, so.
One thing that would caution you, if you get into the habit of doing it where children gather. People often will come in and say, well, my kids play on this street. And so. Should, shouldn't we be able to reduce the speed to ten miles an hour on my street?
Hmm. We had a big discussion.
This happens.
On time ago and after, you could have too many children play signs around because then people don't. Right.
It just kind of blends in the background. Then you can put up like, uh, slow children at play. It's not an enforceable sign, but slow children at play.
But in that particular block around the splash.
Makes sense there, yeah.
Well, but I mean, it's, it's also, you know, going to be potentially more commercial as time goes on. And we already have twenty mile an hour speed limit down Main Street, so.
No one listens to already.
Well, if you'd, if you'd slow down, then we wouldn't have to worry about it.
You're a guy, especially at Ron.
No.
Yeah. They could, uh, reuse the slow children at play sign on my property. That's been there for multiple years and move that up to the splash pad.
Move it a little.
There you go.
There's no, there's no need right now.
No need anymore.
Slow forward employee. Okay. So I think that's.
Yeah, we'll.
For, for further discussions. Uh, so next we're going to open the land bank meeting. So I'm going to call a meeting, uh, of the land bank of City of Hillsborough to order. First item up under our land bank meeting, we have minutes from our July fifteen, twenty twenty-five meeting. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes?
Yep.
Were there any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, except, uh, accept a motion to approve the minutes is submitted.
Oh, motion. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Next we have vouchers totaling fifteen hundred and twenty-five dollars, Mr. Styles.
These are all just plenty of long care. Yeah.
Right. Would somebody care to, uh, uh, make a motion to approve the vouchers for payment? Councilman McCarty, councilman by, motion second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we are now back into our council meeting and Mr. Styles, let's hear your report, sir.
All right. So got a couple of follow-up things here. Uh, co-compliance follow-up, Mr. Herzett was in here at the last meeting, made some public comments regarding his property, the joining property at three fourteen. North Jefferson. Uh, we actually have an active code case involved with that. We've had one kind of. I would call it a running gun battle with property owner for about two or three years. Um. And so it's been ordered and we actually had a cleanup order on it in twenty thirty, twenty twenty-three. If you may not remember that, but. Uh, they had a lot of junk cars which we, uh, that we organized that and got those removed. And so it's actually a lot better than it has been, but still kind of a mess. Um, and so we've been. Kind of going back and forth with that. So there is a tall grass case and I think they actually, they, they did get it cleaned up, uh, to where it meets the standards, but there's some other maintenance issues with that. So. Uh, this is one of those times when you kind of have to use your informal influence to try to. You, I mean, we're going to continue to enforce it, but there may be something that they need to get rid of that house or do something different. Uh, the other thing that Mr. has brought up was about the slope and the rock and the adjacent alleyway, um, in looking back at that. The reason why it is so high is the depth of the sewer line and the manhole in that location. Uh, so we can't really do anything about the grade there. It's just, it is what it is based on where that sewer line, that manhole, or unless you want to lower that, which. Really can't. Um, so it is what it is. Unfortunately, um, we can maybe adjust the rock, but it's actually the same rock we use in other places in town. So I don't. I don't know that it would do much good, I guess. It's kind of the answer to that. So. Uh, another update on the, the dog park proposal. We had talked about that about a month and a half ago. Uh, so the fair boards has given us approval to move forward with repurposing that rodeo arena as a community dog park. Uh, they kind of, it is left in sort of rough shape after the fair, which is pretty typical. Uh, so we're going to have to do a little bit of work on that and then do some temporary fencing and some barrier. We want to keep the. Dogs out of the actual rodeo arena because it is often a mud pit. Uh, and no one wants that. Uh, we don't want to deal with that. Uh, so David Edgar's taking that up. He's going to lead that march on the implementation of that. Hopefully have it open this fall. That's kind of the idea with that. So we're pretty excited about getting out of that, get to that point. Uh, shared use agreements. We have a couple of those with, uh, four, well, we have one with four-ten for the sports complex facilities. So they pay us a certain amount of money. It's about. Forty-two hundred dollars a year. Uh, and it, it kind of works as rent. It offsets the maintenance, the electric bills and things like that. Um, so that they can host their specific sports, tennis, softball, baseball at our facilities. It's just a cost sharing thing. And then. When there are, uh, larger capital expenditures, we go through and kind of divide those out and figure out a reasonable amount that each of those can pay. So. We're actually, the one that we had with four-ten expired at the end of twenty-three, so we need to redo it. It's been kind of on my back burner. It's not like a high priority thing, but. Uh, we're reviewing that right now and kind of looking at what that is. But there's never been one with Tabor College, uh, which is really kind of interesting. Um, they use our tennis courts probably more than the school district does actually, uh, because they're in there in both fall and spring. And then they've, you know, effectively taken over one of the softball diamonds, uh, which is fine because they do maintenance on that. Uh, but they've never paid for any utilities or any other things and they've never paid for any of the capital improvement things with that. And so. Uh, we're going to put one together and approach them about that as well, uh, just to see if we can get some buy-in. There's. There's a couple of, of fairly large expenditures we need to do, particularly with the wind screens at the tennis courts. We spend a ton of money on windscreen at tennis court, about seventeen thousand dollars every three to four years. Uh, there is a product that we can put in there and it's a plastic-based product that has got a thirty-year guarantee. It's forty-seven thousand dollars to do it. However, at the end of the day, when you, when you map out how much we spend on the, the ones that up there, it's significantly cheaper to do that investment. But we just got to figure out how to cost share that, uh, with them. So we'll see if Tabor's willing to, to get involved with us. I, it's always tricky trying to get them to, to put money, invest in things, um, but we'll see if we can make that happen.
Well. You know, and I, I don't want to be a hard nose, but, uh, we could always, uh. Take another look at our, uh, C K. Investment, you know, if, uh, if we need to find money somewhere to do some of those projects.
That's.
Mm-hmm. That is fair.
That is completely, yep, that is an option. Um.
So.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, it's not that we don't have some gentle persuasion, uh, tools.
Okay. Noted on that. Uh, USDA on the fire station follow-up. Ben and I met with, uh, the architect, Stan Shelton, and the USDA program director. We actually had the state director. Um, and then the regional architect, uh, they all met with us. They had some issues. Uh, one of the things that he talked about was the current cost estimate. They thought it was. Too low based on the square footage price for similar construction that they've seen. I think we've dissuaded them from that because a lot of it is the bays, which is an open structure, is not like finished space. And so they were saying, well, it could be three hundred dollars a square foot. Well, not, not for that space, which makes up the majority of it. Um, the size of proposed facility, they had some issues with that, specifically the living quarters that we had put into the plan for future development, for potential future use. They kept talking about right sizing and, uh. Is this something we really need? Is there an imminent thing that would go into that? And we don't really have an imminent. Need for it. And so, uh, we may be having to adjust that out. Um, and then they made another really strong pitch that we needed. Uh, potential shared use agreements with other agencies to help offset the costs. And so, um. We took that to, well, Marcy talked about the Marion County Emergency Response Leadership Board. We took that to them. They're more focused on making sure that there's, uh. Radio coverage. There's about a four million dollar project that they've been talking about to increase the radio coverage. They've got some ideas on that. I'm not going to talk too in-depth about what that is, but it didn't feel like there was a lot of. Interest in sharing that space with us or, you know, leasing some office space or. Helping invest and offset some of that cost, uh, for the Hillsborough Fire Station. So. I don't know that that's a legitimate avenue. We wrote them back and told them that. Uh, they gave, they gave us a week, uh, to revise everything. Uh, and we're very quickly coming up on a week and a couple of days. So. Uh, we'll see what they come back out with. They still really were very supportive of the project and want to fund it. And it's got a congressionally directed. And, uh, funding thing on it. I think they're just sort of going through some of the checkboxes and they made it very clear that this administration has priorities and. Got the whole thing, got the whole deal.
Uh, well, you know. I, I get it. And I mean, you know, we have to play by their rules if we want.
Want their money.
Go down that, to go down that road. But at the same time. This is not a gift. To us. This is money they're loaning us that we will pay back.
Pay it back.
Interest. So, you know, that's, that's a little bit frustrating, you know?
Yeah, uh, they, they're feeling like they're doing their job, I guess.
Well, that's fine. I get that, but.
We're. Keep working them. Uh, okay, uh, your K P P bill, you've got that in there. Last month we had a reduction. Uh, this month it's up five percent. Never can tell. Uh, we're actually entering for billing purposes. These are the kind of the biggest months that we have. Uh, you start with hidden. August, September, October are all kind of our biggest months. So you'd expect to see that scale up. Uh, you got your health insurance savings report there. Save thirteen thousand this last month. Uh, total year-to-date, it's almost seventy. And then we got about ninety in the. Uh, claims reserve fund, which is more than what we need for the liability. The other thing I would add is that, uh, our last M-Prize vehicle, Ben Stecky's fire truck.
Oh.
Finished.
Good.
Was going to pick it up today. I don't know if it's here or not, but. He's going this afternoon.
I wondered why he was on the naughty list.
On the naughty list. I don't know. That one was like a special order or something. I don't understand. Apparently red is a special color. I don't know, but he's got his and it's, it should be to have been delivered and picked up today.
Good.
Very good.
All I got, sir.
Okay. Uh, this brings us to our last public comment opportunity and I don't see anybody online. Is there anybody online? No, sir. And I don't see anybody in the room, so we'll dispense with that. And we will move to council comments. Councilman Jorgensen.
No comment this time?
Always, always, uh, safe. No comment? Council, councilman. Wilkins.
I'm going to play it a little bit risky and make a comment.
Okay.
Um. I really appreciate, uh. Marcy and Dan coming out to present this to us. And Matt, if it wouldn't be too much trouble, I would love if we could find some type of way to post. Like these last couple of pages on Facebook, you know, for the Everbridge and the wet three words and. You know what? I, I think that'd be very useful because I didn't know any of this existed. So. And if I didn't know, I'm not saying I'm, I'm not the end-all be-all, but I'm sure there are other people like me that didn't know that this existed.
I, I actually just learned about what's three words in a, in a novel, a detective novel, English detective novel of all things.
Wow.
And I had never, uh, never heard of it either, but, uh, it was very interesting how they used it in the partic, in particular in this book. To, uh, to locate. A criminal activity, should we say.
I mean, yeah, we make sure you get that.
And then this is going back to your administrative report for the dog park. I don't know if maybe this is already in the works or might be prudent of us to get one, a shared agreement, maybe with the. Fair board and maybe that area. I mean, especially with you mentioning that it was kind of left in. Not so great condition. I think our city staff would, would kind of appreciate if they're the ones maintaining it, if it was, you know.
It's probably well past due to do some sort of agreement with them because we, we pay for a lot of maintenance things over there and. Yeah, but it's a problem.
So just to help us, help everybody just use the space and be happy with it. So. But that is all I have.
Okay. Councilman McCarty?
Uh, I'm going to mention emergency management too, like, uh.
I'm going to mention emergency management too, like uh, I don't know if anybody knows, but years ago, if a plane crashed around here or anything, usually we were close to the airport. So it was the city Hillsborough took over responsibility of getting home with the FFA and everybody. And it was all, we always had to call the clerk, and the poor clerk had to make all the phone calls. So, I mean, it was, it wasn't a very good setup back then. Just, I really appreciate her coming in and talking to us, because I think it's going to work out. I mean, it has worked out really well, so. But that's, well, I just wanted to bring that up, that it used to be the individual towns or the police department had to take care of this.
Councilman by?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Okay, um, you know, I don't have any other comments, again, uh, other than reiterating what I said to Marcy when she was here. She has really upped the game of our emergency management team here in Marion County, and I really appreciate it, so. And I appreciate all of you. Thanks for your input. This was a lot of, lot of stuff to cover today. But uh, feel like we got through it in good, uh, good form, so. Now, I just hope that in some way we can get this idea that uh, we are making a lowering or a, or an adjustment in the, in the citizens' favor on our tax proposal before that comes up. You know, because it's always amazing how uh, there's always people that don't seem to get the word, you know, no matter, no matter what you try, so. Anyway. Okay, is there any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, this meeting's adjourned.